Anyone oppose? All right, public comments. If somebody would like to address the board, we just ask that you state your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes. Anyone?
I would like to, Clayton Lo, nine thirteen Walton Avenue. I just, I'd like to address the board, I just would like to know who was your environmental person about these, the fields that are being changed?
It's not a back and forth, like, the appropriate person can follow up with Clayton tomorrow. You can ask your questions and then appropriate person can follow up with you.
Okay. I, I worked for the school district for twenty years, I've taken care of your kids. I, I've been on this thing since June of last year now, just checking numbers, checking what's healthy for our kids. And I was at a meeting, information meeting in November, and I remember they were talking about football field, artificial turf. But Mr. Byard says field turf, six and a half of the others. All the stuff I've looked at is, artificial field turf is not good for your children, okay? It was kind of overlooked at, at another meeting, because that wasn't the subject we wanted to talk about. But I, I, let me take it off, I was able to talk about it though, okay, I'm gonna, but that wasn't what the PowerPoint presentation was about. So, I have been able to find, there's lots of information. So, and, and probably the one that, is the one that I'm gonna say is in the most middle, so it's not this way or this way, is called Safe Healthy Playing Fields Incorporated. And it has eight or nine different articles in there, or topics. And crumb fill is bad for kids, but it's the cheapest fill. You can go with sand, it's better, but there's more injuries on artificial turf than there is on natural grass. Because natural grass is softer. There's no PFOS, which they have found PFOS, or they call forever chemicals. And not only chrome rubber, but the plastic, which helps makes your glass, your grass straight up. And, so I, I've been on this since June of last year. And, you know, so I'll sit home and take a look, and, I mean, you can go down a rabbit hole, there's so much information left and right. So I've had to sort out what information hurts. But anyway, so, at that point, your chrome rubber isn't a good source for undercoating. The grass on top isn't. This is just a study from Michigan State University. And it costs, for them to do a soccer field, costing twenty-two thousand seven hundred sixty dollars here to up, to maintain a soccer field. That's just one field. Uh, when you take out a field, you're gonna get, and I'm looking how, how long? And what I've gotten is basically eight to twelve years, so I'm gonna say ten years to get a field. You gotta take it out after ten years. It costs five hundred thousand dollars to take that out and dispose of it properly. So, I mean, we're, we're talking money, and we're talking our kids' safety. Um, I'm, I'm for the kid's safety, you know? That, that's where I'm at, I understand where this has already kind of gone, if we're gonna have a vote on it, and that's where it's gonna have to go. Okay, I, I don't think things were looked through. I know Kurt had, he had a lot of mad baseball parents. And I got a feeling, this is, I think the city let us down on this project, and they're making you pick up the bucket of water and you cross the line. And I'm not sure if that's fair for you guys, for, for this group, okay? They should have just come out in two thousand nineteen and said, hey, the village was, or the amount of money was five and a half million dollars. They should have just said, it's gonna cost five and a half million, give us its cost. Now we spent one and a half million, we're six years into this. The tennis courts look like hell, there's no baseball field. And, and the city, you know, let the school pick up the slack. And I feel, I feel sad for you folks. I don't have any kids here anymore, but my oldest, he was looking at moving here. He's not moving here with his two, my, my two grand boys. And that, and that's sad, you know? So, the cost is a lot. The cost for our kids? There's no cost for our kids, okay? So if you want it, if you, you guys want it, it, it's gonna come down to a vote. But it should have never got to this point, we should have had more discussion on all this stuff. And I don't think there ever was. I mean, I keep reading, I'm trying to find minutes and stuff that there was, two thousand nineteen was just I think everybody voted for it, because we thought that's what this, what we needed. And then what happens, what we got is not even close to what we need. Okay? So, thank you for, thank you for letting, letting speak, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, next on the agenda, committee reports, finance committee at the top of the list. Ben?
All right, um, so, uh, good news is, is we're starting to, um, get some bids in for the bond money that we just renewed last year, end of last year. Uh, first thing, uh, we're gonna vote on tonight to approve is the theater light and sound RFD, so get the auditorium back into shape, which is definitely was part of that renewal. Uh, we are, um, everything around our AP, financials look pretty solid. Uh, we're in good shape financially as a school. Um, I think, uh, we, you know, keep an eye on obviously what's going on and ensuring that we're being good stewards of our, our financial well-being. Uh, little talk on finance about, um, getting a couple of new vans. So, hopefully, uh, I think, I think people are, are laughing, because I think our demands we have are kind of laughable, right? So, maybe a little scary driving them, so I think we're gonna try to prioritize those and use some monies that actually we can get from the state, as I understand it, to offset the costs for some of those, so. So, talk about child safety, I think that's probably a top priority. I'm also happy to report that I think we're in probably little, you know, that far from the finish line in all our classroom security doors. Um, we did a lockdown drill today, found an issue, we corrected it, there's one door, I think, uh, that's, has a little, uh, issue that should be rectified, so, um, I think that is a real positive, uh, piece of news to report. And, uh, as far as the rest of the bond projects, we are still getting bids and starting to schedule for work to be done over the summer. So, things are moving. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ben. Kurt, we have personnel committee, but we have not met.
We actually, it was the day right after last board meeting, so we did, we, yeah. And it, and, um, we covered, uh, some updates on, uh, some students and their families that are dealing with some tough, uh, situations right now. Um, we talked over the board vacancy process, which we all will learn a little more about later today. And then also, um, discussed the strategic plan process that, uh, surveys have already gone out, and then, uh, some, a group is gonna be, be meeting this Wednesday, as you guys all know.
That is right, thank you.
It was just weird, because it was so long ago. Because it was the very next morning after last board meeting, so.
Okay, next, academic affairs committee.
I can do that one. If I have the right note here, um, yeah, so we, um, had a talk about the process for board vacancies. Um, we got an update on the building projects and, uh, on the may election. Got some information more on that as well.
Thank you very much. Policy.
Okay, um, we presented the spring policy updates from Yola to the committee. Um, and those will be hitting, uh, board for first read next meeting. Um, again, went over the board vacancy process with that group of, uh, three board members. Um, talked about a personnel issue that is in the works right now, gave a little update there, and then, um, again, the building project, uh, updates on that. Kind of similar meetings, all three of them really, this, this month. Just different people.
And no student reps today, so, uh, we'll be capable. Next on the agenda is presentation for the student academic performance update.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce, uh, Jen and John to do this, um, with a little caveat, so this has got an asterisk next to it. Um, we wanted to give some, um, new information, however, um, with the strategic planning process coming up, and then some other initiatives that these guys have in the works, we want to take this as just a starting point, and then we'll expand on it with some more longitudinal data, and also tying, um, our student performance data with like the, the work being done with the strategic plan, and then also, um, some of the initiatives that they have rolling. Um, worst case scenario, that we will present that at the, um, board retreat this summer, um, but also it'll be, um, at a public meeting as, as well. So this is just a starting point, a snapshot of some of our most current data on, um, student performance. Is that good?
If you win, you go first.
I can, I can, I can drive.
You can be our van, I why?
Yeah. Lisa.
As long as I'm off camera, this is fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can hit the next.
Sure. This is just, um, a quick demographic breakdown of our student body, did you do this?
Paul did this slide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I get this one.
So you can see how many students are in each grade level, DK and K are combined. Um, that's how the state likes us to report and how power school likes to do it, so there you go. Um, DK is technically and legally speaking a planned retention anyway, so, um, that's why, some of the reasons are combined. You guys know how to read, you can see gender, you can see their ethnicity. Ethnicity is defined by the parents when they do enrollment. So that's how it's decided what, how students are identified, is by whoever guarding enrolls them in final forms, that's their ethnicity. Uh, it's not the district's place to assign that. And then free reduced lunch, um, reduced, would pay half, free would pay none, but lunch is free, so, there you go. But that's also used when determining federal grant money, those numbers are used to help determine, I believe thirty-one A?
Several of us.
There's a lot of reasons the two bad marks not here, but that's one of them to verify what I'm saying. Um, did you guys have any questions about numbers? Okay, great.
Yep, you did.
Um, so, this is, the student risk screening scale is called the SRSS, teachers do this, uh, three times a year. It's one of our things that we do district-wide to help see how our positive behavior intervention support system's working, just to also make decisions about what we do to support kids, and what kids, because we, it's not anonymous, teachers do it. So for example, um, Ms. Cutler, third grade teacher, has my son Leland. She spends about forty-five seconds kind of answering questions about some behaviors that Leland has, and her entire class has, and based on that score, he's either considered low, moderate, or high risk for externalizing problem behaviors, or internalizing. Externalizing are what, uh, people usually think of as acting out, uh, being rude, disruptive, maybe physical. Um, whereas internal is more things like shutting down, withdrawing, not forming healthy social connections. Um, so these are based on teacher judgment, and while it's a flawed system, research suggests it's about as good as it gets for a screener to look at all kids. So that's what we use, and this is the breakdown of the elementary as of the end of January.
So, as we're going to the next middle school slide, I think, um, one of the things we're hoping to like paint this picture for you all is you're gonna look at data and numbers, but there's a face behind all of these numbers and the kids, and so when we look at the data, we're like, what does that mean for us, right? And when we think of things like the bond project, and lockdown drills, and all the other stuff that happens in school, how can we make sure we're looking at really the whole kiddo, or the whole student to support them? So, this was our middle school, um, SRSS screening, so similarly what you would see, and then both John and I, our teams take this data, and then we're like, what interventions and things can we provide to kids, who are our kids that are at high risk? How do we support them, um, whether it's a counselor, social worker, or things like that? Um, and, and bedding things within the day to make sure those kids are seen and heard and connected, because we know when kids feel safe and comfortable at school, they're gonna perform, um, better academically too. So, you can see that's what our middle school looks like, so as they, it's interesting in middle school, you'll start to notice more of the internalizing stuff, so the behaviors don't necessarily come out outwardly, but internalize, go to high school. And then high school's pretty, pretty even, what we would see. So there's, most of our kids are pretty good, but we do have those, those students that are working in those areas.
I have a question, because I think I was reading this, I think correctly, when you showed the first slide. Low is, they're at low risk.
Low risk, yes.
So it's like the opposite of when you're looking at academic.
Yep, yep, so low risk, most of our kiddos are here, and then
I got worried when I first.
The yellow or the red, those are the ones that are at higher risk that we might notice, um, and provide more interventions with. So, John mentioned PBIS, like all of our kids get that, that's our tier one system, system DK twelve. So all of our kids benefit from that, and the social emotional, and then those students that are in the yellow or the red, they might get some additional interventions, tier two or tier three, depending on their needs.
So, which teacher in the middle of high school?
Yeah, good question, so the middle school, high school, their Norse time teachers complete it, so then it's the same all the way through, and they kind of, that's that time where they really are doing the advisory, check-in, kind of supporting those students. Yep, good question.
Most Norse time teachers have them throughout.
Yes, they have them for other classes too, but that just keeps it consistent so that we know that they're them all year. Cool?
Oh, I didn't know you were. Okay, so this is, um, all behavioral referrals on average per day in session for this school year. So, this is the elementary, um, so a month like December had fewer school days, but this is the average per day. So it's prorated, so to speak. And honestly, when it was December, so last year, by, it went September, October, November, December, and I just felt great about that. This year it was the new year, and I'm like, well, these kids aren't gonna learn this, I'm not gonna show that graph next time. But, phew, way to go, Jane, February month, we have a, a declining trend, the kids are learning. Um, but as I imagine is still the case at middle school, high school, a very small percentage of kids are those like tier three kids, and, uh, one kid will have account for a score, two score, forty-ish referrals, just themselves, which will drive the average up for their whole grade, whereas you'll have forty kids with zero referrals, so. Uh, but it's nice to see it going down, so I, I'm showing you that.
When it says per day per month, is that, I'm not sure.
So, it is.
Four per month now, or is it four per day?
Average of a day.
So on an average day in March thus far, we're gonna have four referrals.
Okay.
Or four point oh five.
That's what I thought it was.
And a referral, um, is probably a quarter to a third of them are office managed, so they come see me or Ashley Westerland. Um, and the rest are staff managed, but the staff is gonna contact home and make a referral, so you have a little record of it. So, that's what would count as a referral.
So roughly like five a day through the whole school year?
Probably somewhere in that ballpark, yeah. We're hoping April and May keep declining mostly.
Ours looks a little different, it's not because we necessarily have class. Um, yeah, that's why, let's just go with that. So to be completely transparent, and Dana can jump in, when we started this two years ago, we weren't tracking any referrals. So when, last year, it's been a process just to get people to log them and to really, to kind of shift our thinking, yes, it's often discipline, but also it's a way for us to track data, right, to know like what behaviors are we seeing? One, how can we help the kids if we notice a pattern of behaviors, but also, one of the things we're like, well, we have a lot more behaviors at two o'clock. Well, what does that mean, are kids hungry, do they need movement breaks, like what can we embed within our system that helps us? So, uh, it looks different for ours, and we're getting better data, but it's still not as consistent as we want, because we've really had to train up our staff on how to do it, what to put in as referral, if staff manage versus office manage. We have really great teachers who just handle a lot of stuff themselves, right, which is awesome, and we wanna celebrate that, but how do we take that and still track the behavior, so we know what are they addressing, and is there more that we need to do? So, we're in this weird, like, we're starting to track more data, but it's not quite as accurate of a picture yet as we want it to be, but we're getting there. These are your babies. This is all you, Johnny.
I know, they're about to. Uh, so this is, as the board and maybe, uh, members of the community already know, as a district, we don't rely terribly heavily on the M step as an assessment. Uh, we do use the NWEA MAP test for math and reading, and we do that three times a year, and it's generally considered the gold standard for screener type assessments. The M step, however, in my opinion, is kind of a slightly cheaper knockoff than the state mandates we give to our students every spring. Uh, but what's nice about the M step is the state does support making handy dandy graphics, and since we're presenting to you, there's, there's a lot of color. But, um, this would be dating back several years. Um, our third grade, and what percentage of our students were meeting a set cutoff, um, of mastery that the state decided on. And so, like this, I guess we'll say goldish color, is a certain cohort of kids that you can track. Um, and then their eighth grade year was COVID shutdown, so they didn't take the M step. And then you'll see if you track this kind of purplish cohort, they jump down right here, because there was a year in there where nobody in the state of Michigan took the M step, if that makes sense. So you got two graphs, this one would be third graders, but it's a different cohort, COVID occurring right where that dip kind of occurred. Um, I believe, we might all need to check my numbers. And then, um, over here is the most recent classes trend. So this would be this year's fourth graders, they took the M step for the first time in third grade of last school year. So they only have one data point, so there's no trend there. They'd be that dot right there. It, do, do you guys have any questions about that? So this would be, um, fourth grade, this would be this year's fifth graders, they have two points of data, they stayed relatively flat. Um, I'm gonna lose track now, that's third, that's fourth, that's fifth, right? Sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth. And honestly, these ninth graders no longer take the M step, so M step only goes up through, for math and reading, up through seventh grade. Then at eighth grade, they switch to the PSAT, which we as a district do prefer to the M step by a lot. So this would be third through eighth grade, um, and you can track all the way down to some classes that graduated already. It's a lot to look at. Uh, you can tell though, that this isn't like the trend anyone would be super excited about, this is ELA, by the way, subject-wise. Um, we would love to see a graph that's flat or trending upwards, it hasn't, right? Uh, now these are different cohorts of kids, but, uh, this is part of the reason, I mean, I, we can get into school improvement and district improvement plans, but revamping everything for math in ELA are, are top, some of our top two or three priorities over the next several years. So, that's what you're looking at. Are you guys okay to go to the next slide? It's the same thing but for math. Did you do that, Paul, you did, see the super huge font where it changed to mathematics? Um, so yeah, this is the same stuff but for math. Um, the trends sort of similar. Little bit better, so these would be though, like middle school grades, so you can compare. And we do look at this stuff, but, again, like, I don't know, I have, I personally have a hard time with too much reliance on these numbers, just because if it was the NWA MAP, I go, oh, wow, this is really useful, we should look at acting a little more differently, more rapidly, but because it's the M step, meh. But here you go, I just use some of your minutes of your life that you'll never get back showing you, anyway, so. Is this me again? Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, so this is the MAP test that we do prefer, that students take three times a year, and is widely nationally normed. Um, this is based on percentiles, not like a meets a benchmark or doesn't, but rather relative to, I think somewhere in the, around twelve thousand students in, all around the United States, uh, pre-COVID. I think the window is like two thousand nine or ten through twenty eighteen, something like that. So this would be pre-COVID national norms, with the fiftieth percentile being a dead average student nationally pre-COVID. So, um, over here we have our kindergartners, our average kindergartner, or rather, median kindergartner was fifty-fourth percentile, and so on. And this is for reading, hey, the font's bigger. And then if you were to average the whole school, nope, go back, Paul, sorry. Um, this would be our whole school's average, and these are split up into, I think they're called pentiles, into like first through nineteenth percentile, red. Twenty-first through fortieth percentile, uh, is yellow, or excuse me, orange. And then if you're fortieth-ish, forty-first through sixtieth, that's considered the average range, that's yellow. And then to skip up to blue is eighty-first through ninety-ninth percentile. So, um, that's what we're looking at, and it, and then we can track that over time, we don't have the longitudinal data in front of you guys, but we do have it, and we do look at, to look for trends and things like that. Um, that's reading. Questions? No, okay, great. Now it's math, yes. So then, uh, there's math. Also, for both of these, this is from our end of January, early February test, so it's relatively new information. And then this is our school's average down at the bottom. Phew. And this is before we've even, so we did do, we started doing some professional development around effective math instructional practices, but we only just started, so I don't know if that is why these scores look a little bit better or not, but we have, we're about fifteen percent of the way through teachers learning what they can do prior to this assessment, so.
This is after two tests then, or two, you do, said you do three a year?
Yeah.
This is two and you got.
Um, so we usually do one, like, early October, then end of January, and then again in early to mid-May. And we just, and we look at individual kids' scores, but we also look at trends for the whole school, and subgroups like gender, socioeconomic status, racial identification. We even look at like in district versus school choice students, because that's in our, that's something people want to look at, so.
Out of those three, which, which of those terms, which is, which is the highest, you know, October, January, or?
Um, so it's a moving target, the percentiles, like, those three times are the ones that the MAP, the NWA company used as far back as twenty years ago. So, um, they tend to stay about the same.
Okay.
Uh, because the fiftieth percentile cutoff score in October is lower than it is in January, is lower than it is in May. So, if you were to graph a kid, you'd see a graph that progresses upward, that the fiftieth percentile score is higher, and you should watch your kids' trend with that.
Good work. One of the reasons we like the MAP data is, one, we get the data right away, so like with M step, we get it like the next year. So after the kids have already gone, then it's like, oh, awesome, like they missed all these skills, and it's harder to catch up with so much delay. So by doing this three times a year, um, we can do interventions, we can support students, um, this helps us to determine, or like testing, if students need to have additional things like that, so teachers can look at that. They also, something that's new that, um, we're not quite using yet, as well as we, um, hope, but is but is MAP accelerator. So you can take these scores and then each kiddo can go in and get a differentiated, customized plan for them based on the skills that they need to grow. So next step will be to train our students and staff to be able to use that, to really see that, that piece. So my thing's just a little flipped. So it has a top, like our overall above and our grade levels. You'll see grade five, we do have some fifth grade students that are taking accelerated math with us. So that those, that's why those, those kiddos are in there. But again, you can see kind of the yellow, green and blue are where we like hope to be, right? So as, as that's going, and then we're able to identify our students that are in those red and those orange classes, those are the kiddos that might be in our numeracy classes. So all of that data is used to pull stuff. Or if kids like to take a foreign language class in eighth grade, we like to look at their ELA scores at this too, to see if that might be a good match though that we're setting kids up for success. So this is our ELA data. We just started to do eighth grade this year. We used to only do sixth and seventh grade, but we decided we were paying for eighth grade anyways. So it seems silly to not do that as another data point. So that's brand new this year for our eighth grade students. Yep. So there's our math scores. And you can see our, this shouldn't surprise our kiddos that are up there are doing well there. But we're noticing some things. So this is, we were talking about when we did IM and this is the fourth year, right? But these kiddos in our middle school wouldn't have had that yet. So we're looking forward to when we see it kind of transfer into PSAT and SAT scores once they get that IM math curriculum in with John and his team doing bridges and getting trained on that. We're really excited to be able to see that continuity kind of, kind of build into grow, so. Yep. Questions?
Remind me what IM?
Illustrative math is the name, right? The name of the curriculum?
For some reason they pronounce it illustrative.
Oh fancy. That is the math curriculum that we have. Yep, so. John was part of that with the team, so. Cool. So here is our national, our state stuff. We have the note to add, the national state, we didn't do that, but I pulled it in luck. That was a note to myself, so we just forgot that. So here are our PSAT, SAT scores. So all of our students take the PSAT in eighth, ninth and 10th grade. And then the SAT as juniors, also our juniors take the PSAT in the fall. So all of our juniors took the PSAT this fall and then they're gonna be taking the SAT in a few weeks. This year, it's a little different because it's all digital. So every student will be taking it digitally instead of being on one day. We have a window to do that. So this was the last year that it was paper pencil. So we get the scores back a lot quicker, which is good. We already have our PSAT scores from this spring. But you can see where our strengths are. And then it breaks it down for what percentage of students need improvements and things. Comparatively, we still do better than state average and national average. So that's good to see us like still continue to do that. So that was in our board retreat, information that I shared with you guys this board retreat. And then we'll share the most updated ones again. But that's good to see that we continue to do well. But we also have areas that we can grow. And just kind of like we talked at the board retreat, now we're starting to dig into, what are some of those areas that we need to dive in deeper? So like our ELA team, for example, stuck all of those SATs things. And they're like, okay, where do we cover this in the curriculum? Where do we, to make sure that our students are getting that all the way through, not just in 10th grade or 11th grade, but from six, six through 12. So those are, those are the fun pieces where you get to take the data and figure out what are we gonna do next?
Do those scores and the results, like for instance on the math, does that give you a sense of what parts of math that they're struggling with?
Yeah, yeah, so you can, yeah, so you can break it down and it will tell you like, if it's operations and algebraic thinking or whatever that is, or writing mechanics or pieces like that. Then it really tells us how we can focus in on our instruction and see. And we, they've really been, the ELA team has really, really dove into it lately and they can, we can see why. Like when we look at like our curriculum and we're, oh yeah, like there's, there's some gaps there where that needs to be strengthened, so. Yep. Cool. So another source of pride is just the AP classes that we offer. These are the classes that we have in person. So this year, these are all of our classes this year. AP Bio and AP Chem are every other year. Ms. Jay does an awesome job with that. And then APUSH is also offered every other year. AP Stats, we added that last year. And then this year is our second year of that. That's one of our, I would say most more popular AP classes. The kids are really, really pumped about that. These are AP courses that students are taking online. So we might have, like we have three kids that wanted to take AP Psychology. Obviously, you can't run a class with three kids, but we don't wanna hold kids back from that. So those kids get an opportunity. We have one in AP Macroeconomics, kudos to them, because saying it gives me hikes. But so there's other opportunities for kids. All of the kids are able to take the AP exam here, whether they take it virtually or in person. So they'll get to come here and take those AP exams. So total, we have 91 students that are enrolled and 91 spaces that they're enrolled in classes. So that's kind of cool to see. Cool.
What's the grade level set?
Typically, it's juniors and seniors. But we have some sophomores. We've got a, we've got a handful of sophomores that are in some AP classes right now too. Yep.
Your econ classes are one of your smallest classes then, online or?
Our AP Econ?
Yes.
Yeah, these, I think there was one in each of those this year. We have regular econ, so all kids have to take econ to graduate, just general econ classes, an MC requirement. But for, if it's for AP, that college credit, then we just have a few.
You have to take it to get a degree in college now too.
Econ?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, all, all of the kids.
My youngest, he said that was the toughest class he had.
I bet.
And he said it wasn't just him, it was the whole class, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just one of those things that I think they're pushing more now.
Yeah, so all of our kiddos take econ here, but if they want to do, specialize in doing AP, then they, they have that opportunity, so, kind of cool. These, it's hard to see, but these are our students last year did really well. We had 15 of our students that took over AP Scholars, that mean they scored significantly. One was with distinction and there's two like above AP Scholars. So that was really exciting. There was a total of 70 students that took the AP exams. It's, it's interesting because it's a cool opportunity for our kids to get college credits, which is nice. But it also is a cool opportunity, there, there are some kids that have taken like AP Lang, for example, knowing that they might not score high enough to get the college credit, but the skills and the writing that they're able to learn within that still helps them to be a stronger, a stronger student as well. So we'd like to see those scores maybe go up a little bit, but all of our kids take that AP exam. So we know that that's, you know, different reasons and we still, we don't wanna withhold kids from taking the class just because they're worried about the exam, so. Yep. Questions about that?
Does the school pay the cost for that?
They do, we do, yep, yep. The school pays for that, which is kind of nice. Do you want to take this one? We, or tag team it? Do you want to tag team it?
Sorry, back to me. So these are just some of our generic, or really not generic, but over generalized maybe. So what we observe is students do have behavioral needs at school. So we're making sure we know who those kids are and what they might need so that we can continue to support them with their behavioral needs and look to reinforce and expand what we're already doing. So it's working, but how can we do it better? Reducing the number of problem behaviors over time. We're gonna continue to support the students with those behavioral needs. And again, look to reinforce and expand what we're already doing. The other, I don't know, okay, yeah, you all have kids. So you may recall a time when you had your like toddler's habit dialed in and you knew how to meet their needs for 15 minutes. And then the next day, they were different. So multiply that by 900 to 1,000 kids and that's what we're trying to do with the behavioral supports, right? So we might have it nailed today, but by tomorrow and then after spring break, who are they? So, yeah. Having a higher percentage of students making the benchmark goals than the national average, state average and neighboring districts, we're already doing that. So that's great. But we want to continue to seek ways to support and enrich what is working well for our students academically and just keep improving on that. We have lots of plans in the works that we've already started to implement, that we have every reason to believe will continue to widen that gap, give our kids better educational opportunities. And then the percentage of students making the benchmark cutoffs in ELA and math have slowly declined, depending on the measurement that you're looking at. And it's like a slight deflation, a little bit. That's more on the MAP or the M step, which is not our favorite assessment. But we're gonna, this is district wide. Having renewed focus on training staff how to use best practices for teaching those assessed subjects of math in ELA. And we're also gonna be purchasing new curricular resources and making sure teachers know how to use them with fidelity over the next few years. Bridges is the name of the math curricular resource of the elementary. We've had for nine-ish years, but the staff have not known how to use it with fidelity. And that's not their own fault, it's just kind of a systematic thing. And so we're gonna do that and it's gonna be really good.
And then I just wanna like, anytime I get a chance to thank our staff that we have here, this stuff doesn't just magically happen. So it's kudos to our staff who were tirelessly and just do an awesome job connecting with kids and meeting them where they are, where they come in with all of their things. So just thanks to the staff and to our families and communities and all of you. Like the whole, it takes a village. I think I'm proud that when my kids come back and are gonna bring their grandkids back to school here because there's a lot of really cool things happening here that you don't always see, right? Like when you're out there driving by the sign, you're like, what's actually happening in those walls in North Tuskegee? And being in the trenches with all of you and the staff is the most rewarding thing to see our kids continue to do, to do well. So I just, I just want to say thanks to the staff and community and our families because it wouldn't be this cool without all of you, so.
Could you email us a copy of the presentation?
Yep, no problem. And if you guys have other like questions or like, we're gonna share some longitudinal stuff, dive in on some more specific things. But if there's specific things that you guys wanna look for, like what is, like shoot us those messages too and then we can put those together specifically to answer questions for you too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that covers the information section or presentation. Now we're on to new business. And item 583, the first reading of the SEAB recommendation of curriculum change, which everybody has a copy of in their packet.
Done a presentation with academic affairs and the community forums that happened. This is first read, so if you have any questions, just shoot them to us. We'll get answers, we'll get those out to everybody. Danielle is here today, but appreciate all the work that she's done on this. And then, so second read with a vote will happen next, next meeting. And then it's, will be put in place.
Okay. Any questions right now? Okay, now we get into some not so fun stuff. Item 584, the approval of Mr. Doug Clark's retirement.
Yeah, you nailed it. The not so fun stuff, so. Yeah, everybody, everybody loves Doug. He's touched a lot of lives and he's definitely, definitely gonna be missed. But I know he's got some plans, so I, I don't think we should get in the way of his resignation. I'm gonna miss not only his, as a teacher, but he's just such a quality person, so.
Yep. One of my very first flights down to Florida, he was on the flight with me. You're ready to go, Art.
Thirty-six years.
Yeah.
Very awesome.
Alright, well unfortunately, I do have to ask somebody to make a motion for the approval of Doug Clark's retirement.
I move to approve with regret.
Support. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Item 585, approval of Sue Weeters' retirement.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I just thought her letter was, you can tell that that was from her heart. Again, Sue will be missed. She works with some tough kids and does a great job. So yeah, she'll be a tough one to fill within the next year. But again, I know she has some plans chasing her, her kids. Now that they're gonna be going on to college and I told her that there's no way she can catch them because if you know, her, her students, her kids are the ones that are excelling in track and field. And so, yeah, she won't catch them, but she's gonna follow.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to approve?
I move that we approve Sue Weeters' retirement with regret.
Support. Okay, we have a motion with support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Alright. My God, she isn't here. Item 586, the approval of Dr. Mary Moulton's board resignation.
Nope.
I don't know.
I already tried that.
Steve already, Steve already tried that.
She didn't buy it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say a whole lot. I've been talking enough with you guys and others and, and I just don't wanna cry in a public meeting. So I'm gonna miss Mary on this board. She's not going far though. She'll still be on speed dial like a worker.
Alright, will somebody please make a motion?
I move to approve Dr. Mary Moulton's resignation from Tuskegee School Board with regret.
Support.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
See that it's recorded?
We someone had to say it.
Okay, thankfully Paul is here. We're gonna go into two separate items. First will be the approval of the theater sound RFP that you've all seen in your packet. And Paul can maybe answer any questions you might have or give any little background to the RFP process.
Paul can hit specifics, I'll get the general one. If we were building our auditorium this summer, this is, this is what we would be putting in it for sound and light. This is all very much up to date stuff. And it's gonna bring our, bring our theater, our auditorium right back up to stuff. And I applaud Paul for staying on these vendors and making sure that we got some good bids. And it'll be exciting. I asked him, I said, are you telling me for sure that you're gonna be able to notice the difference in sound and the quality and then the lighting? And he said, yes. So if we were gonna do that, build that auditorium, that is what we'd be putting in, bringing it right up to date. Paul can take any specifics you might have, but that's where I'm at.
We reviewed it in finance as well, so we did a good job. Thanks, Paul. I move to approve the RFP for theater sound.
Support.
Okay, and that was.
Can you say specifically who that is?
Yeah, that was.
Live space.
Live, live space for 142,760. So that is the motion. Do I have a second already?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the lighting, if I could get a motion approving the Tobin's? Tobin Lake sales bid for that RFP.
I will again move, or motion to approve, move to approve the theater lighting RFP for 200,068, 200, 268,000 dollars.
Okay, we have, and this is all bond. Okay, we have, uh, and this is all bond, uh, money that we're talking here, bond improvements. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
You got a second?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, couple informational items. Kurt?
Yeah, um, hopefully people saw this on our, um, social media post. But, um, congratulations to Mrs. Lisa Winter for receiving the Certified Board Member Award from the Michigan Association of School Boards. This award recognizes Ms. Winter, Winter's efforts to improve her leadership skills, demonstrating her commitment to student achievement and her own continuous improvement as a school board member. Thank you, Ms. Winter, for your dedication and congratulations on this recognition. It's a lot of work you, uh, have done over the last year or so, huh?
I know, but it's fun.
Fun.
All the class, I mean-
Some people might think board of education training and being fun might be a little sick.
Like, I'm just taking notes, I've got notebooks.
Actually, Lisa, because of, um, uh, going through these and bringing some ideas and fresh, uh, fresh ideas, um, our board, uh, member packet that is being developed right now and kinda refined. Um, many other things in that, uh, came from some ideas that she brought back from the state association. So, yeah, very appreciative and good job.
Thanks.
Lot of work.
Okay, and also, uh, you wanna talk about the?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna hand it over the floor to the person who was central of getting these-
Thirty-five J grant? Can you enlighten us?
Sure, so this date, um, whenever they, I, I don't know how they encountered, but they had a pile of money and they thought, let's do it, boys reading. And they did that in late January. And so they bought a thirty-five J competitive grant to get money for, I believe it's K-five, ELA curricular resources or then, or training and/or training for teachers to do a better job of teaching ELA K-five. So, um, we went for it, they changed the rules on us twice, but we got the damn thing. And, um, it's somewhere, oh, it's at least a hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards that. So when, I think it's listed up there, somewhere about new curricular resources. Um, we're in the, yep, the bottom one, I don't remember. Uh, we're doing that right now. School improvement, you know, the elementary is going through the process of selecting new core curricular resource for K-five reading, some of which actually goes through K-eight, so we're already covering with like the LA PLC at the middle school, high school, and Schultz. Um, and training, and then we'll hopefully have that new resource not next year. We'll pilot a few next year and then select one for the following year, which is super exciting because we are super ready for it. And someone in the audience's spouse is essential in helping select it, too, so it's a mystery for that. So it is really, really cool cuz that's a heck of a pile of money to get in a month when they changed the rules twice in that window. But it's green, so we are excited.
Thank you and congratulations.
Great job.
Well done.
Good enough.
Thanks for that.
Okay, now we're gonna move to board comments before we go into closed session. Lisa?
Um, I wish Mary was here cuz I can't overstate what she's done for the board and that amount of time. So I won't go into that too much. Um, I did wanna say that our competitive cheerleading team did get top honors for Academic All-State for the second year in a row. I wanna say it was like three point eight-three-ish was like their average GPA.
Wow.
Yes. So not only did they make it to the state finals, but they're a bunch of smarty pants, too.
Um, obviously a lot going on. Uh, I wasn't at the last board meeting unfortunately, so just a lot to catch up on. And, and, uh, I just am encouraged, uh, by the work on the bonds. I think, um, you know, obviously get the vote out ASAP seventh. I think this is definitely, you know, this is for the kids, right? Um, and the work on the, the existing bond, the, the progress is looking great. Just super excited and optimistic about that and the future of our school. Um, as always, um, the support of the staff. Um, and sad to see people retire and get these letters this time of year. But, um, also excited to, for them that they've left a legacy and left big shoes to fill, right?
Yeah, I, I just, to go off of that, I'd like to wish all of our retirees, um, great fun in retirement, I guess. Um, I do wanna thank everybody for the work that has been going on with all the different bond projects and with the upcoming proposal. Um, and really just encourage everybody to make sure they're getting, you know, the right information. And so there's a lot of, um, information that the school and the city have. And I think it's important that everybody takes a look at that and sees what's happening and where it's moving. I think that's important. Um, just a quick NEF update, uh, May thirteenth, we're gonna have an open house to showcase grants that have been awarded over the past three years. And it's gonna be at the school, so you can see some of these things actually in the classroom. And, uh, hopefully we'll have some teachers to be there and explain some of the things that they have done with their grants as well. So that's really exciting. Um, and we're also hoping to make some, some pretty fun announcements, um, at that meeting, too. So, um, that's May thirteenth at the school. And I think we are starting at, at five, six, six o'clock. So I hope, um, as many people can come to that as, as possible.
Okay, um, I wanna reiterate the, um, the thoughts about retirements. And, uh, it is wonderful that we at least had some of these people for as long as we did. Hope they do enjoy retirement. Um, also, congratulations, Lisa, on that, uh, commendation from MHSA, or M A S B. So, and, uh, thank you for our, um, principal team for the presentation today. Very good info. That's it.
I'll just, uh, reiterate those comments. And, um, I was, we have, uh, teachers and board members who have been here for, for so many years. I think that is also a testament to our school and our community. If you like to work here and be part of our, our school and, uh, that it's always, uh, with, um, some happiness for them as they move on to other parts of their, their lives and careers. But also thanks for, for their time. It, uh, it certainly benefited all of our kids that, that went here. So thanks to all, to all three of those folks that, uh, time.
I wish Doug, Sue, and Mary well and hope they enjoy their retirement, but not forget how to get to North Muskegon Schools for events and things.
Thank you, I'll be around. I don't have anything extra to add except my cheesy line before you guys go into executive session every year and talk about my, uh, evaluation. Just think good thoughts and, uh, have a good, have a good evening, so.
Well, on that note, uh, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, and it will be a roll call vote.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss the superintendent evaluation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could I get, uh, an affirmative?
Yes.
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 We are in closed session. Meeting not adjourned, but-